Town Council Meeting, January 27, 2015.
Session, it's January 27 and the time is 6:30. I want to ask Councilmember Steve to give tonight's invocation. Councilmember Raoul?
Before I begin this invocation, I'm going to be repeating a condensed version of an invocation I gave at Martin Luther King Breakfast on Monday, January 19. So let's bow our heads and pray. We are so grateful, dear God, to celebrate the life and legacy of Reverend Martin Luther King and the global community of the Research Triangle, a destination for all faiths, ethnic communities from around the world. Let us pray in this world of increasing violence, the attacks in Paris, the random acts of terror and violence which we read in the newspaper and see on television every day, that we can come together and commit each of us, that we not only remember Dr. King's speeches, but the fact that he was a remarkable man, but that you empower us to live our lives as Dr. King had dreamt for us, that we establish here a kingdom of understanding where men and women will live together as brothers and sisters and respect the dignity and worth of every human being. We pray that our nation, the state of North Carolina and nations around the world, will make every effort to honor this ideal, that all men are created equal, an ideal which our nation and our brave soldiers defend every day here in America and around the world. Please, God, give us the strength and wisdom so we can come together as a nation and build a better future for our children. We pray that you bring out this great potential within each of us so that we can change the world and make it a better America for future generations of citizens. As we end this reconciliation prayer, we are reminded of a quote from our President Lincoln, who was also taken from us in our country's history. We pray for peace and reconciliation, not only for our time, but for all time, and as in Lincoln's words, "That this nation shall have a new birth of freedom and that a government of the people, by the people, and for the people shall never perish from the earth." Amen.
Amen. Could you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The town manager, I'm sorry, the town attorney, will be joining us a little bit late tonight, but Frank Gray will be here this evening. And thanks for Councilmember Raoul for stepping in for the invocation. We appreciate that. Before we adopt tonight's agenda, per the ethics policy of the town council, it's the duty of each council member to be free of conflict of interest or the appearance of conflict of interest with any items on tonight's agenda. So I'd like to ask the council, if you have any conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with anything on the agenda, please speak up now.
No conflict.
Seeing none, I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so Diana, that's official. We have two sets of minutes from December. Let's cover these one at a time. And again, this is a new summary minutes that we're going with, December 9. Diana, were there any changes to those?
There are no changes.
Okay. Seeing no changes, are there any other discussion about the agenda from December the 9?
I had one small catch. I wish I had a town named after me, but on page two, I think the reference was to the town of Garner and not Gardner.
Okay.
That's all I've got. I like the abbreviated minutes, by the way.
All right. Yeah, thank you, Diana, for putting that together. Okay, so we'll have that one typo fixed. If there's nothing else, I need a motion to adopt a set of minutes from December 9.
Motion to adopt the minutes from December 9.
Second.
A motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those are adopted. Next one is from the December 16. Diana, any changes on those?
Yes, you have found at your seats some proposed, small minor proposed changes on page five or six. In reference to a change from Mooresville Carpenter Road to Jeremiah Street, that would be changed. And then also a reference to physical, social, and economic. We want to state what that is, so those would be factors. And then also at the end, changing the financial piece to economic component.
Okay. If that all reflects what was in the minutes.
The actual Mooresville Carpenter Road change to Jeremiah Street is an accurate change. When I reviewed the audio, it was supposed to be referencing Jeremiah Street. I think the change from financial piece to economic component, it is a clear, it could be a clear shift that is similar, but it does have a little bit different connotation. So that's why I put it out for council consideration.
If you'd allow me.
Sure.
Okay, that was in regards to something that I was saying, talking about the physical, social, and economic. And to say financial piece at the end, even if I maybe did during the minutes, it's more of an economic, because everything needs to be financed, but it's the economic component to sort of match up with order and importance. So it sort of has a different feeling when you say economic component rather than financial piece. So that's why I was hoping that the council would consider the intent of that sentence and allow that change.
All right. Anyone have any questions or concerns about the change? Okay. Seeing none, I'd like to have a motion to adopt with these changes. Go ahead.
Move that we adopt with those changes just mentioned.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any other changes? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so Diana, those are both approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next up, we have a couple presentations, both very long in the making, and it's quite an honor tonight to have this first one come before us. I know this has been an incredibly complex project. I appreciate everyone's time that they've put into it and look forward to hearing the final report. I know you guys are fresh from your final meeting, so welcome back to Town Hall, and I'll turn it over to Benjamin Howell for that.
Come on up. So this is the quick presentation on the final report of the Blue Ribbon Commission on Transportation Funding. Diana's handing out the report as we speak. And with me tonight are Reza Jafari, who is the Chair of the Commission, and Lee Langston, who is the Vice Chair. And then we have other commission members in the audience as well.
Thank you.
So as you should be aware, the purpose of the commission was to study possible funding sources for transportation projects in the town and then report those findings to the town council, which they have now done. Quick background on the commission, it was formed by the council in August 2013 with members appointed in November of 2013. Originally, 11 members and two alternates were appointed. We did have two resignations over the course of the year, so we did end with 11 full-time members. And they had varying levels of expertise. We had several engineers, at least one or two project managers, transportation planner too, and then some citizens with interests in transportation as well. And the commission met monthly from January to December of last year with final report being issued tonight. And just to remind you of the commission membership, we have Reza Jafari, the Chair, Lee Langston, the Vice Chair, Robert Bush, Craig Gross, Kenya Ador, Michael Roberts, V. M. R. Sarvapelli, Jason Schrontz, Narendra Singh, Brid Shaw, and Cindy Schwartzkopf were the members of the commission. And just to remind you of the commission timeline, it's on the screen in front of you. The appointments and the commission setup was done in November, December of '13, and then, starting in January '14, we had several staff presentations to the commission through about April. And then the commission did a big chunk of their work between May and September with ease in October through December to finalize the report and then publish the report and present to council this month. And with that, I will hand it to Reza Jafari to go over the evaluation criteria.
Thank you, Benjamin. And thank you, guys, for having us. So in order to, we ended up having a few criteria to evaluate the funding sources. We ended up having actually six evaluations. I go through each one of them. If you have any question here, of course, you can find them in the report, but the first criterion was the sufficiency. If that funding source was enough, was adequate for the specific project that, you know, we are trying to fund. The timeliness, if that funding source can be available in a timely manner. Predictability, if that funding source is a shorting or not. Does it change over years? And also, we wanted to consider security. Initially, we had this as predictability and security. What was the history of use of that funding source? Was that new or it has been used in the past? Legality of the source in the state? Equity, if that funding source was fair for different users and if, you know, for different users or different populations. If the certain population benefited or contributed more or less for that funding source. Suitability, was it appropriate for a specific use if it was limited by existing legal framework? Cost, was it, does the funding method, has any financing or interest cost associated with it? Or even, does it have any non-monetary costs, like political costs, associated with it, like raising taxes? So in order to evaluate those funding sources, we actually, we decided to evaluate 17 different funding sources. These funding methods are categorized into different categories, financing methodologies and funding sources. Actually, the list is complete here, and as I mentioned, they're listed in the report. If for any of these you have any question, feel free to ask at the end. But the financing methodologies, town has to go to depth. Town is going to bank or financing agencies, and usually the financing interest is associated with that loan or with that bond. But for the financing sources, I mean, those are the fees and property tax values, that usually they're there. So you just need to use those money. So with this, Lee is going to continue.
Thanks, Reza, and Ben. So they basically broke down into three categories. One are funding sources the town is currently using and should continue to use. And obviously, general obligation bonds, that's the largest funding source that the town can come and directly control. You know, and even larger source is the NCDOT STIP funding. Of course, we don't have as much control over that. Obviously, the town has worked with Campo to try to push our agenda, but, you know, we're just a sort of small fish in a larger pond in that scenario. Property tax, obviously, that pays back a lot of these, and, you know, council has to weigh, if we want to increase that, or every, you know, periodically. Motor vehicle registration fees are another thing that's used in the past. It doesn't really contribute much to the budget. There is a small amount, I think, that could be raised, but it's not going to raise a lot of money, unfortunately. Powell bill, we already get that money. That's pretty much set aside for road maintenance. I know there's going to be some coming potential changes in that as well, so I'm sure that staff will be continuing to look at that. Something the staff has done well in the past is with development requirements, having people do some, you know, access and whatnot. We should continue to do that and then continue to push with Campo with federal funding. We've actually found the town has gotten a lot of good grants from the CDVG grants as well as Campo, although the Campo seems to be limited as to where it can be used in the future because of the economic sort of in the town. There are a few that weren't really used. A lot of these sort of have some similarities. Some of these can sort of generate a similar amount of monies, none of which really as much as general obligation bonds. But, you know, the biggest one that could potentially be used in the future would be impact fees. We don't really have the ability to do that, but the legislature ever does give us that, that would sort of go hand in hand with the development requirements to potentially have the pay-as-you-go that a lot of people seem to desire. Some of these others, again, the town can try to get grants where they can. You know, some of those are useful for very small type projects, you know, limited sort of spot improvements. And then, you know, there's a few that we said we probably wouldn't want to use because things like permit fees are already a needed town. Department is funded by the permit fees, you wouldn't want to divert that. Revenue bonds are usually used for like sewer improvements or maybe toll roads, which, as much as I think people might like to toll everyone driving through Mooresville, that's not going to work. Tax program debt, there's a lot of restrictions. It's dependent on the real estate market. You know, so there's, those are pretty limited as what we could do. There's a lot of restrictions. It's probably not necessarily worth, at least in the current climate, pursuing those particular And then the final page is sort of a graphical, high-level overview of what is really in the report there and just has, you know, why we consider each criteria either beneficial or not beneficial for the town. So this is kind of the report in a nutshell, and you can refer to the individual sections for some really detailed breakdown of what we were looking at. And I'll turn it over to Ben for the wrap-up.
And one final table that was also in the report is a level of investment matrix where we went through and only looking at the financing methodologies or funding sources that the commission was recommending to either continue to use or review for future use. Tried to get an idea or provide council an idea of what the approximate level of investment could be for each source and then the type of projects that each source could potentially fund. And that's in the report as well. So the final slide really is to, you know, what are the next steps now that you have this report? And so, you know, really, the next steps, as I think we've talked about a little bit at the retreat and over time, is, you know, the next step's going to be to prioritize transportation projects in the town, you know, preferably, as we talked at the retreat, through a transportation plan update process. And then also to determine, try and determine some cost of transportation projects on that prioritized project list. And then, once we have that information, you can, you'll be able to use this Blue Ribbon Commission report to try and determine what the best method for funding the transportation projects may be. And with that, we're happy to take any questions you may have at this time.
Who would like to be first? Councilmember Lang?
I'd just like to thank everybody. I think you did a wonderful job, staff, everybody. And any way we could incorporate, thinking about incorporating this kind of study into Mooresville 101, I think would be great. That would be it.
All right, thank you. Chris?
Well, I also wanted to thank the members of the commission. I know it was a big sacrifice of your time, and we all received copies of the meeting minutes, and I read through those, and you all really spent a lot of time on this project. And we're all really grateful for what you did. And I'm really excited about reading this. I'm going to read it cover to cover, probably in the week after next, but I think this is vitally important for us as we make our decisions. I did have one question. I don't want to get in the weeds too much, but with installment purchase debt, like where you use the thing you're buying as the collateral, I was thinking in terms of a road, but I guess it's more for things like bike paths and other maybe non-traditional modes of transportation where a bank would be willing to loan money.
Yeah, that was, that was one where the commission itself, I know, had a lot, some discussion about that, and that was a difficult one to try and address.
Yeah.
I mean, potentially, you could use it for a road, but again, you know, one of the questions we came, kept coming back to is, how does a bank repossess a road?
Yeah.
So, you know, but we did, you know, we wanted to include it because it is a financing methodology. And while not directly, the town has used that in the past to purchase land that it then used to put a place a road on. So it, you know, potentially has some tie-ins like that, probably not so much as for building the road itself, but maybe, you know, as a method to purchase the land to then, you know, in the future, build a road on that land.
I look forward to reading more about it. Thank you.
Congresswoman Colley?
Thank you very much for all your efforts. I have a question. And Lee, you mentioned something towards the end of one of the slides. I'm trying to find which one, about the economics of Mooresville kind of preclude the use of one of these? If you could...
Yeah, some of the Campo, the grants that they administer are, yeah, oh, I thought it was the Campo. All right, but they're restricted based upon the average income of the area, and they can only be used in areas below a certain level. And so, as the town has grown and become more built out, there's very few areas now that actually fit within that.
So I just want to say, this is my little piece that I plan to say. Whenever citizens become more engaged and involved and develop subject matter expertise, our entire community is strengthened. So thank you all very much for your service.
Thank you. Vicki Scruggan-Johnson, would you like to go next?
Very good. And you said that so smoothly. My last name is getting better. First and foremost, thank you all for your time and your effort, and I'm so pleased to see what a really mature, in-depth, thoughtful report that we have. We are very fortunate, Mooresville, to, you know, we're fortunate to have Benjamin, but most importantly, we're fortunate to have you. So now, we have more individuals in our town that really understand things like Powell Bill and CDGB and STIP and all those magical things that are essential for us to be successful in our efforts to both develop roads and maintain our roads. It's not easy, and it is give and take, and we are very much vulnerable to changes in our environment with gasoline usage and formulas as they change. So I'm looking forward to learning more about Powell Bill and the STIP formula and so forth like that, and seeing how we can take this information and maximize the potential for our roads and in keeping them in a better state tomorrow because of this report. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Raoul, go next, and we'll end up with...
Okay, I just want to thank you all for this great report. And when we voted to have this Blue Ribbon Task Force, I think we were excited about, as everyone has said, addressing an issue that's getting increasingly worse, congestion, traffic. And this is just a great work product. In fact, it's so beautiful, I think if we sold it at Barnes &amp; Noble, we could maybe make some money, sell it to all the other towns. But I think that, I think Benjamin said it so well, I mean, the next steps is really identifying our priorities from, you know, maybe in conjunction with the transportation plan update, and then having just a nice body of work that, you know, we can use as a council, a future council can use, and also this, you know, let the citizens know the different sources out there. The only question I had was, was there any talk about ideas I've heard in the past that the General Assembly could consider, like state infrastructure banks? I've heard former Representative Murray's talk about that. I've heard Secretary Tittah talk about public-private partnerships and things like that. Are those things down the road that we should be talking to our state about?
We didn't really talk about a state infrastructure bank, so to speak. We talked a little bit about public-private partnerships, and we felt that some of them were, they were somewhat included in some of the methodologies and sources that are already in the report broadly. And then, too, there's just a question of how that could actually work, in Mooresville especially. So we tried to focus on sources and methods and financing methodologies that are known and that can, we can, that have a history, especially in North Carolina, and that are easy to, you know, really dig into. So some of those things are probably covered a little bit, but at the same time, if it's, you know, especially the state infrastructure bank, that'd be more on the state side. So we were trying to focus on things that the town itself could do.
Appreciate your work. Thank you.
Mayor Scruggan-Johnson?
Thank you all very much for all the time you put into this. I had the pleasure of sitting in on a couple of your meetings during the year, and very informative, and you all did a fabulous job. I will tell you, the matrix is wonderful. I think this is going to be easy for us to reference and refer to and help us as we move forward. So I appreciate all your time and efforts very, very much. I'd also invite you all, though, you know this is not the end of the conversation, and Benjamin has mentioned how we're looking to do a transportation plan update in the very near future. And I think we have a little more conversation at the council level to talk about funding of that, but I would invite you all to please stay involved in that conversation as well. Clearly, the funding options are important, but the prioritization of the roads and the projects that we have out there is going to be important, too. So I invite you all to stay involved and to help us through this, through this conversation. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. And I'd just like to extend my thanks to the Blue Ribbon Commission members, you know, that put in all that time. I know it's a lot of long nights. The pay was lousy. But we, I think the end result is a significant accomplishment. I mean, this is, you guys should be, you know, incredibly proud of what you did. This is a true roadmap, no pun intended, for, you know, future councils and for the public to see what we have to go through in order to, you know, get roads built around here. So I really do appreciate the time and effort that went into this. I know it wasn't easy. I'd also like to thank our staff, particularly Benjamin Howell, who was instrumental in, you know, making sure this thing moved forward. And last but not least, I'd like to thank former Mayor Jackie Holcomb for her vision in even talking about this idea. It was really her idea to begin with. It's morphed slightly through council votes, but I think, I think it was something that, you know, her idea was to think of options for us, not say no because we couldn't figure out something. And I think, I think this accomplishment, the, our ability to look at the options and hopefully say yes to a lot more projects in the future. So thank you to her, thank you to staff, and thank you for the commission, for your fine work. I do appreciate it. Benjamin, would you do the honor of having your commission come up and receive a...
If I can make one quick announcement, I've talked to Martha about this before the meeting, she thought this might be the best time. Just real quick, since we're talking about transportation, the Wake Transit Investment Strategy, as we all know, is going on. The Transit Choices Report, which is the first report in, as part of that work, has been released. It was released late Friday. It's available, I'll send the council an email tomorrow with the website where you can download it, but it is available on the website. It's www.waketransit.com, very easy to remember. One thing I did want to mention, they're having two public information sessions coming up in February, and since the first one at least will be before your next meeting, I wanted to go on and mention that. The first one's Tuesday, February 10 at noon at Cameron Village Library in Raleigh, and the second one is Thursday, February 12, again, at noon at the Express Library on Fayetteville Street in downtown Raleigh. And then, staff will be back to make a presentation to council as well in February about the report and the next steps. But encourage everyone to download the report, read through it. There's an online survey. There's some questions on the online survey you can answer without reading the report, but if you want to provide deep impact or deep impact and really get into it, you can read the report, and there's some questions in that survey as well that are based off of the report to help lead us into our next stage of this work.
Okay. Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
All right. Do you want me to call the commission members by name, or...
Well, or their nickname, or whatever. Absolutely, have them, they'll come up here.
All right. We'll start with the Chair, Reza Jafari. And Narendra Singh.
This was a tremendous achievement, and you really laid out something that we're going to use quite often as reference material. So it will go down in Mooresville history. You will not be forgotten, and please stay engaged, as Mayor Scruggan-Johnson said. We need smart people like you. Don't be afraid to...
Don't be afraid to come back in for other committees and to help us out. So, thank you very much.
Want a copy of that?
Oh, yeah, the book, too.
The mayor buys the first round.
Will there be a book sign?
Yes.
Well done. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anything new, Carlotta? No, just another quarterly report. All right. So, I, I do welcome our chamber president, Carlotta Angaro, who's going to give us the Economic Development Quarterly Report in 15 minutes or less, right?
Right. And also the end-of-year marketing report, too.
Absolutely.
Great. Mark asks if there's anything new. Yes, this is my last time reporting to you. I, I regret that, but I'm also excited about new opportunities. But I've enjoyed serving as the President of the Morrisville Chamber these last few years, and I've especially enjoyed my role as the Economic Development Person for the town of Morrisville. During my time here, Morris, Morrisville has seen numerous companies move into the area. Two came to the town asking for incentives, which means that's where I get involved, and the town was able to address their needs on both occasions. The first was Air Cryne, and the second was Teleflex. Air Cryne moved into existing space and was projected to hire about 45 people, and they have met their goal. Teleflex moved, brought a new building to Perimeter Park, which we, we like for those tax revenue. And they opened their doors this past October, and they are slated to employ close to 450 people within the three-year period of their contract, so by 2017. That's, that's a lot of people. We've worked together to improve the planning approval process, and the highlight of that was the passage of the Unified Development Ordinance in December 2013. We've together worked on hosting familiarization tours to make sure our local, state, and regional economic development partners are aware and know it's in Morrisville. Diana, I'm not on the report yet, so sorry you're having to roll around. We've, um, we've launched a new website and even did a little bit of proactive marketing. One project that wasn't quite finished was updating the incentives. We actually were ready to come to you guys with some incentives, but Wake County decided that they needed to update their incentives. So, we felt it would be wise if we waited to see what they were doing in case there was something we could leverage, uh, and their changes before we brought them to you. So, they're supposed to finish them up in this first quarter, and I've got people ready to go and make any changes to bring to you guys if that happens during the interim period when there's not a chamber executive. The elections happened, and that's what kind of happened with that project. Park West Village has built close to 600,000 square feet of retail space in the last four years, and Perimeter Park has added close to 500,000 square feet of office space this past year, and will be adding another 192,000 in this upcoming year. Morrisville is the North American headquarters for the world's largest computer manufacturer, and it's also home to three companies on Inc. Magazine's fastest-growing companies list. While the chamber can't take credit for any of those projects or doing anything there, we can certainly bask in their glory and tell their story.
That's right.
Uh, now that I've reminisced a bit, I guess I better get on the report so Diana can, um, she's put it up here for you. There's nothing super exciting about this quarter's report. The fourth quarter's always quiet. People are busy buying Christmas gifts instead of looking for new sites for their businesses. So, it, it's typically dead in the economic development world this time of year. Uh, a couple of things on here, because this is sort of a annual report, end-of-the-year report. I am to complete 10 business industry visits for the year, and I did not make my goal. In fact, I missed it by half. Uh, I've left some suggestions for the next person on trying to address that and getting those appointments set and completed. But the good news is the five companies I did visit are happy here in Morrisville. They are all expanding, one of them significantly, and they're not going anywhere. So, so the good news is the five that we met were great. The only abnormality in this report is it's that time of the year where we get a full count of the privilege license. People buy, get those privileged license throughout the year, and then at the end of the year, all the existing businesses that were here before are to pay those, and we can do more or less of account. This year, with the changes in the state law, we were actually able to identify some companies that we thought were in Morrisville, but they were actually in carry with the Morrisville Address that shouldn't have been on the list. They were doing business in Morrisville, but just not domiciled in Morrisville. So, that was a bit confusing for us when we worked on the list last year. So, the number of businesses that I had been reporting to you at 843 is really 829 businesses in Morrisville. And with the, the number of coming in through the year, 77 new businesses, we actually had 78 move or leave, so we had a net loss of one business. But those that are here, a lot, a lot of them are growing. I, I don't have, we don't collect that kind of data, but, um, it just has that feeling that we're expanding and growing. So, that's the report, that the abnormality is that, that change in the number of the existing businesses that we had been using for the year. Uh, there's, um, the website, we had consistent visits as, as the previous quarters, there wasn't much difference, which I actually consider good because I would have expected less visits to the website during the holiday season. We still continue to get a lot of looks from Brazil, but I still haven't gotten that phone call from whoever from Brazil's looking to locate a business here. Um, I've talked with Wake County Economic Development to see if they're hearing a lot from Brazil either. Uh, active projects, which Diana's got up here, um, like I said, not a lot of activity. Those that were on the list, we did lose, um, Wake County did report that four of those had dropped off. Uh, and, and so there's the status. We do have several, two existing industry projects that's on the A-list that we hope to see some action from in the next, next period of time. You guys may have some questions. That, that's it for that report, Diana. But during my, um, during the search for my replacement, I have tried to tee up and make sure the activities that the town helps support are covered. Wake County Economic Development will be stepping in, and when, when we do get information requests from them, they always let me know. I provide them additional information, but we actually use the same database. It's called Exceligent. And so they are able to access pretty much the same data I have. I may know of a few more things around here. But if anything goes to that next step, I've already connected them and introduced them to Martha via email, so they're prepared to reach out to her, and I've given them, um, the tools that I use in working with Martha on, on calculating the numbers and those kinds of things. The other piece that, that the town funds that we do is the startup programs. And that piece, the staff at the chamber's maxed out. They really can't pick that piece up. So, the economic, I mean, the, the Morrisville Innovation Board and the Chamber Board have decided to contract with Ian Henshaw, and many of you may know him already. I think he's spoken to this council about open data, and he's going to step up and, and fill that role for the interim months. He's, he does similar activities of providing networking events and support in emails and webs, and, um, blogs and those kinds of things. So, I feel confident that he can take this program and keep it going for the next four months while they do the search. When I started here, um, a little under four years ago, uh, it was a four-month process from the time I started, I submitted my resume to when I walked into the door of the Morrisville Chamber, and I hope they'll take at least, at a maximum, that much time, hopefully less. I know Nadine's hoping it's less time. So, um, I do wanted to let you guys know about that. One more additional thing that I want to complete before I do. We've made some videos at the chamber on different areas of promoting the chamber and the town, and one of those is an economic development website. I was, I had a goal to try to show it to you tonight, but it just didn't happen. It, it, it will be on the website before the end of the week, so maybe next Monday, go to the, um, choose Morrisville website, and, and it should be up on that website. It's a nice piece, uh, promoting the town and why you should relocate your business here. Let's see. I've done all that. I'm going to start it. Uh, as required with our agreement that Tony and I set up a couple of years ago, it's that time of the year where I tell you what I spent and, and what the chamber's going to spend. And that's that second document that looks like a spreadsheet, like this. Yep, that's it. So, last year, uh, we actually spent $49,881. That does include what we've allocated out for staff time. What we do is, is we allocate funds from the foundation over to the chamber, and most of it are these activities. We do leverage some public-private dollars with our public dollars through sponsorships and trades and, and all those kinds, and some, um, grant monies. We've been able to tap into some grant monies the last year. And so that's, that, uh, the next year, the budget will go up, and that's predominantly because of the startup program. We are at the chamber building out some office space upstairs to house, for a period of time, three startup companies. And so we have, um, we did that a couple of years ago, but we used the space at Perimeter Park, and it was just a little bit cumbersome and hard to manage, and we've got them in-house now, though they can use our Wi-Fi, use our meeting rooms, which they, they tell me is the most important part, is having access to those meeting rooms. I know several of you have, have used them for town meetings, too. So, we'll have them in there perking, perking their ideas for, for five months with heavy mentoring and, and a, a presentation at the end to connect them in the VC community or help them with their next steps in marketing. And so that's the big piece of, of the, of the difference in the cost, because some of the costs are going to help deal with that build-out. The only other change that I wanted to mention is I do spend a little bit of money on marketing. I did some postcards and ran an ad, which I provided a copy in your report of the actual page in the magazine with the Morrisville ad. Mark shared that information with me, and it was a little bit short of on a deadline. I think he got the letter late, and then I got the letter late. I actually called them the day after the ad was due. So, um, I feel we did a pretty good job of throwing an ad together. So, I'm, I hope you guys liked that ad. But next year, I'm recommending that we, um, the Wake County Economic Development's changed their strategy a little bit, and we do try to leverage what they do, and they're going to be doing, um, some one-on-one visits with site selection consultants in Chicago, Atlanta, and New York City. And I'm recommending that my replacement maybe, um, scheduled to go on at least one of those trips. They're trying to make those cost-effective, and some, in some situations, fly up and come back in the same day, so you're not paying for hotel rooms and overnight and but getting all the visits in. So, I think that would probably be the best bang for our buck, is to be on those site visits, being a team player with our regional partners, instead of, um, doing the postcards and, and advertising. So, we'll do it more on one-on-one. If you guys have any questions for the quarterly report, or what I have put out there for, for next year, or the changes, or the process of the change, just let me know. Put my glasses on so I can see you.
Yeah. Uh, any questions for Carlotta about what she's presented? Are you done with your formal presentation?
Yes, I don't have any questions. I'm done.
Well, uh, we have some comments. I know Councilmember Schlink would like to start out.
Carlotta, I just, a statement, I'm going to read it, but I, um, I, I really appreciate all the work you've done and your staff. You've been instrumental in helping to improve the business climate here in Morrisville and bringing to the table workable solutions during our town zoning, stormwater, and building updates that we will see and, and felt for years to come. On more than one occasion, I witnessed and admired your facilitating skills in bringing together various voices of the business community, town staff, and elected leaders at the table to work things out and trying to understand each other's perspective better in finding a solution. Uh, Carlotta, you have been a key asset in acting as a bridge, working on the town's economic development plans and opportunities with Wake County and state officials. A few that come to mind, um, well, are, are the Wake Competition Center, Hattie's East Meets West, Farmers Market Discussions. Thank you, Carlotta, for your involvement in shaping our town policies and being a relentless supporter of Morrisville. Good luck in Georgia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There is no way I can top Michael's statement. So, I'm not going to try, but I am going to say a sincere thank you for all that you have done for Morrisville. I had a chance over the last few weeks to speak with some of our chamber members and members of the public, and I have heard nothing but good comments about the way that you are able to bring together groups of people so that they are comfortable, the networking is strong, and they have great pride in Morrisville, and we appreciate that sincerely. And I know that you are going to make the folks in Georgia very happy, and we are envious, and we wish you all the best. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Chris?
I echo those sentiments. Wish you the very best. And remind me, where in Georgia you're going to?
I'm going to Fayette County, which is in the metro Atlanta area. It's just, just south of downtown Atlanta.
All right. Well, if I'm ever down that way, I'll swing by and check you out, but good, best of luck to you. You'll do well.
Not that far from the airport, so it'll be easy swing by.
Yeah. I do. Councilmember Ralga?
Yes. Um, well, I tell you, it's, uh, it's been hard to top all these things that have been said, but, um, you have really been just such a wonderful asset to the town of Morrisville. We all, the council, the citizens have been such a great beneficiary of your leadership. Michael alluded to your facilitation skills, but the thing that I admire so much is that you've, you wear so many different hats in your job, from running the chamber to being the new face of entrepreneurship innovation, and you and I worked hard on that with our, with everyone here to make that happen, and we're seeing a lot of momentum in that. It's just quite exciting, uh, being the economic development contact, or community leader, the East Meets West Festival, all these things. So, um, you know, I, it's hard to say goodbye, but I know you're going to be a great asset where you go, and, um, it's, you've laid a great foundation for your successor to build on. So, I hope that the heart of the triangle will, you know, be, you know, continue to grow, and, um, it's been one of my greatest honors to work with you. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please.
Next, I'm, I'm not going to repeat everything, Carlotta, but, but just to say thank you very much. The, the work and effort and, and the time that you've put into the chamber and the town is greatly, greatly appreciated, and you, we just heard all those efforts. But I don't think folks understand or know, or maybe know, all that you do for our community outside of those roles. You are, been actively involved in the Morrisville Rotary all these years, and actively involved in the Morrisville Community Fund as well, from its inception. So, um, thank you for that. Though, your, your service to the community is going to be greatly missed. Um, so we appreciate all you've done for us and wish you, wish you well, um, heading back home again. So, thank you.
If I could ask the town council to join me up on the stage. You, too, Carlotta.
Steve has my book.
It's really amazing when you think of the progression that the chamber's taken. Um, I've, I've been around for, um, since, uh, '99 is when I first came to Morrisville. I think it was Pat, was it Pat? Or who was it first?
Jody. Jody.
Yeah, Jody, and then Sharon, and then you. At every step, it's, it's grown because the town has grown quite a bit. And I, I don't think anyone imagined what Morrisville was like when, when that chamber was set up, and you have really moved us forward. I cannot tell you how thankful I am for your role, especially with the Business Council in, in moving, really a voice for the community that doesn't vote, but is obviously a very important part of what we do here. So, thank you very much. I, I can't even imagine all the things that you've done for us. Uh, can't, I can't state them all, just way too many things, but, um, I think if you just look around, look at the success we have, even as recent as today, we've got some tremendous news, um, due in large part to what your chamber's set up and what we've all tried to execute, we've been able to execute. So, uh, thank you so much for your time here. You've left us a much better place than when you came. Uh, we're going to miss you dearly, but Fayette, will, Fayette County is blessed to have you. So, uh, best to you and Maurice down in Georgia, and, um, come by and visit one day and see how we did. Thank you so much.
[applause]
This is, uh, is this the first phone we presented? This, this is our new plaque, and, uh, we wanted you to have that on.
Wow, that is so nice.
It says, um, Carlotta Angaro is the best. All right? It's a lot of stuff, too, so. Pop rocks.
Maybe you can take it back for the chamber's 25th birthday party on August 14.
I would love to have you. Okay. Steve will buy your first drink.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, thanks for everybody. I got to go to the other side.
Congratulations.
You're probably the only one that's seen my town on the stage. You were in the Army.
Okay. And next up is For the Good of the Order. Let's see if the town manager and staff have any things to talk about.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a theme tonight. It's all about meetings. And the first meeting I want to talk about is just to, again, express my appreciation and, and just real delight at what a wonderful retreat we had last weekend. Staff, thanks you. I thank staff for all the hard work that they put into the weekend. I, I think that the, the time we spent together really will help us continue to grow and chart our short-term and long-term course. So really, really just appreciate both the efforts we put into the work, but also the opportunities to get to spend a little bit of time together outside of the work. So I'm just really, really pleased with that. We have a whole series of important meetings even after tonight. Tomorrow will be the, I'll call it the inaugural meeting of our newly revamped Performance Measurement Assessment Committee. They'll, they'll start on their new course of looking at their new function and role, and we'll start getting that ingrained. On Friday, we get to spend Carlotta's last day of work with her in part, because it's the Chamber of Commerce annual luncheon that we'll all attend. Saturday, I hope you'll all come and join us and celebrate the lives of our firefighters and, and celebrate their work. And then, then we'll give you a break after that. I, I make note of those because they're not on our calendar later, and they are important meetings. The other announcement I have is, is not a big secret at this point, and I'm sure all of you will make mention many, many times over the course of the night, but we were officially awarded Google Fiber City status today at a press conference. I, I think Morrisville was the only town that had all of its council members there. So. And, and most important to me, and I think many of you already know this, but it would not be without the exemplary, and I can't even imagine how many hour efforts, Tim Goss and with his help Rodney Watkins put into this effort. And you just don't know the number of emails and phone calls and visits this man handled for us. So please recognize Tim for his hard work.
Here. Here.
He's a jolly good fellow. He's a jolly good.
We're all going to buy you a round after this.
He gives a good speech, too. Well, thank you. That was really nice, and I was just really pleased to be a part of this project. It's a, it's a great learning experience for me, and it's, it's exciting to work on something that has such a positive impact on the community and is so well-received. It's, it's nice to be able to do something that everybody likes. We don't always trade that position. But Martha did mention Rodney's name, you know, Rodney's been invaluable. And Rich, Ben, Blake, Jim Meyer, Amy, all your team, your team staff really helped on this. I could not have been it myself. I just kind of coordinated a bunch of people who are smarter than me, and gave Google what they needed. So it worked out really well. I'm really pleased. There's obviously a lot more to do. We're continuing to work, you know, the, the plans and all the technical things. You've read the literature, and we're going to try to make it as smooth and as painless as possible, and so have a really good outcome on the other side. But thanks, your support was, of course, really invaluable, and the enthusiasm that you've, that you conveyed to me and to us, as well as the citizens' excitement about it, really makes the job kind of fun. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. Just a, a quick note, I earned some cool points today with my 20-year-old son, who actually called me up to say, "Hey, Dad, I saw you on the TV. That's pretty cool. You're getting Google Fiber." He never calls except for money, usually, or something. So, anyway, thanks for elevating me in the, in the household a little bit, and appreciate that. So, anyway, are you ready for council comments? This is the new and improved council comments. We're going to be quick, to the point, succinct, get on. Chris, you're up.
Ah, start with the easy one. I actually had four things to, that I wanted to.
Oh, yeah, you're wasting time.
I, I want to reiterate Martha's comments about the retreat. I thought it was an excellent retreat, my first retreat, but I'm, I'm proud to have been a part of it and more proud of the momentum that we, I think, got out of that. So, well done. We, we were all at the Google meeting or introduction this afternoon, so that's already been briefed. The irony of that was, I don't know if you all saw it on some of the local news feeds, but the news feeds were horrible. So they, they really could have used Google Fiber for that. The, looking forward to the chamber meeting on Friday. Hope we all can be there. And also looking forward to the fire department dinner Saturday evening. I'm going to cook my barbecue chicken, so come hungry.
All right. Did you hunt the chicken?
What's that?
Did you hunt the chicken?
No, it's store-bought.
Store-bought, okay. All right, good. Steve?
Yeah, I want to, the retreat was great. I want to thank the staff and the mayor and the council. It was the best one I've been on in the last four years. So I was, I think it was great. Look forward to a good, positive year. I also want to thank former Mayor Holcomb and the council for the Blue Ribbon Report. I think it was exciting tonight to see the final work product. We were there when we approved it, so I want to thank the former mayor for the leadership on that. And, and then finally, the, the Google Fiber was just, was just very exciting. And I think it was, it's just a game-changing event for the region. So, you know, I'm looking forward to making it happen. And Tim, thanks a lot for all your leadership on that.
Good to know. Thank you. Mayor President Johnson?
I'll be really quick, too. Just, I want to extend my thanks to staff and to council for the retreat this weekend. It was an excellent, excellent retreat. Martha, I don't know how you're going to top yourself next year, but it was very, very well-done. And I, I agree with Chris about the momentum. I'm really excited about the momentum that came out of the weekend. So thank, thank everyone, thank you to everyone for that. Just want to remind everyone the Wake Transit Choices Report that Benjamin talked about and the dates that are coming up. I do plan on attending both of those events that are coming up, and you mentioned the date. If you go out to the transit website, all the information is out there and the reports. So just to repeat that, and I'll be there, and if anyone wants carpool, let me know to those meetings. And of course, the survey is available. Is the survey up and online now? Okay, perfect. And then, yeah, Google Fiber. Thank, thank you, Tim, and thank you, Rodney. Thank you very much for all the time and effort you put into that. That was a, a lot of effort and, and hard work on your part, and truly paid off, and we are thrilled. I, I can't tell you, I had people call me, too, actually, this afternoon. So I know folks are excited, so thank you.
Very good, thank you. DJ?
Everything that everyone else has said, I'd like to say that I personally really enjoyed the retreat. Thank you to staff and fellow council members for sharing their thoughts and vision. I look forward to the progress we're going to make together.
Good to know. Thank you. Vicky?
I have a new item.
Oh, good.
Yes, I know. I'd like to thank town manager, Weelock, and director, Tony Chiatakis, for acting very swiftly on a request that I made over the week. The celebration of the 100, it's not a celebration, it's commemoration of 150th anniversary of the Morrisville Station skirmish or battle, whichever way you Google it. Okay, sorry. Will be in April. And we have two signs to commemorate this event that have been installed. We are on the Civil War Trails, which is a national trail registry. And we also have a historical marker for the Morrisville Station Battle, which describes a battle. And those signs were preserved and tucked away into storage because of the enhancement of the Town Hall Drive intersection improvement. But we have a celebration three months away, and I had some citizens ask if they could see the signs, so as visitors come through, they can enjoy the signs and know that where this battle actually, or skirmish actually took place. So I have learned that those signs will be temporarily reinstalled somewhere appropriate along Morrisville Carpenter Road, so that they will not be damaged, you know, throughout the construction. And also, there are two signs in Indian Creek Trailhead that have information about the skirmish and also have information about the trailheads. And I do believe they are on a replacement that should be finished before the April event as well. They've suffered some damage over the years due to UV exposure. So we're going to have a very shiny set of signs in Indian Creek Trailhead, as well as signs that will identify the location of the skirmish, and we can celebrate the town with that as well. So thank you very much for your assistance with that, and I know that our visitors will appreciate it as well. And I would just like to say, great retreat. It was very insightful for me personally, and I know it was very helpful for us to kind of get to know a little bit about each other and how we can work best together. So I look forward to the, the next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael Schlink?
No questions tonight, but ditto on the retreat, it was fantastic. And it doesn't, and I, I just want to make kind of a, a public service announcement, but today is January 27th, is International Holocaust Remember and Stay. Town of the Memories of Six Million Victims of the Holocaust. And encourages the development of educational programs about Holocaust history to help prevent future acts of genocide. And then, I did attend the school board meeting, the joint session, and, you know, and Steve also went, and it was pretty much what the newspaper said is what it is. I just, I passed along to, I appreciate everybody's efforts and lobbying over the last few years, Wake County. They have told us that they are hearing our message, and one of the things they did was they used an example of going through their process of coming up with school locations and making showing, it's out there for the public and for everybody, but they use the example of E-33, which is in our quadrant, along with Cary and Briar Creek, and they used the Cedar Forks Little Road site. So that was very good, and they defined it so, and that was their message to us, saying, "We're listening, and we're going to do what we can do." So, thank you and appreciate everybody's efforts.
Sure, absolutely.
And just to follow up on Councilmember Schlink's, I have, I actually received confirmation today that they, I'm going to be able to schedule them to come directly to Morrisville and make that presentation here at a meeting in February or March. So we'll get that scheduled into our calendar. And then just one last kudos to ourselves. We did issue a press release about ourselves today about the retreat, so wanted to toot our own horn a little bit. So Stephanie got that drafted up, and it went out today.
Good deal, good deal. And just saying, I want to thank my fellow council members for a fantastic retreat, and it doesn't, they don't happen by accident. There was a lot of work that went in ahead of time. And they don't mean much unless you engage yourselves, and I felt like we had an incredibly high level of engagement among ourselves. People were very honest with each other about a lot of things, and I think that all, does nothing but pave a bright future for us. We got a lot on our plate, a lot to look forward to, and, you know, working together. We're going to accomplish some really great things. So thanks, thanks to everyone here. Thanks to the staff for their efforts in helping put that on. Tim, I'm going to search, can we change your last name to Google? No? Anyway, you're the man. Rodney, thank you for your help. Rich, Ben, the rest of the planning team, thank you so much. The, the work is ahead of us on that, but people are really, really excited about the prospect. So looking, looking forward to seeing that over the next couple of years. Thank you. Next up, we have a public address. Stephanie, has anyone signed up to speak? Seeing no one, the next item is our public hearing. This is item 2015-003, the Carrington Mill Boulevard Annexation. I don't see anyone for that either. So I need to, I think we can probably be safe to close that public hearing. I need a motion in a second.
Move that we close the public hearing.
Second. Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The public hearing will be closed, and we have action on that on, I'm sorry, the business meeting in February. Is that correct? Am I reading that right?
Yes.
Okay, February 24th, so. Next up is an action item, then we have our, this is, this is not on the consent agenda, this is item 10, item number is 2015-008, the resolution to consider credit for the HSNC payment in lieu. Martha, do we have any updates since that was last briefed?
Yes, sir. I did want to give council just an overview of the updates that were made to the briefing item that you saw two weeks ago. Did, after council discussion, go ahead and re, actually rename this item to reflect that what we were discussing was a credit against the payment that they had made rather than their original waiver request, so that the item has just been retitled. Then did go into the body of the briefing sheet, and, and you should be able to differentiate where the changes were made, because it's either struck through or underlined, but did correct the information about the North Carolina statutory rate of 8%. It does not change the recommendation, which was to apply a full credit to HSNC, and just that that 8% was a frame of reference when there was not one stated, and that is the case with this item. So the recommendation continues to be that the waiver, or not, a waiver not be granted, but that a credit be applied, that the resolution does not illustrate a specific rate of interest should council wish to do that. I would also indicate that if council does approve this item, I would be happy to either as town manager or working with Frank to do a settlement agreement to really clearly articulate the position that council has approved, and that this consumates the discussion and satisfies all the obligations related to that, since we're sort of suffering from unclear records from the past. If you chose to, you could even make that a part of the resolution.
Okay. And if we, okay, we'll get to that when we do the resolution. I want to open it back up for questions or comments before we put it to vote.
Discussion.
Yeah, we're, this is, this is discussion time, so, Chris, did you want to?
No, I, I support the resolution. I do think it's a good idea, for prosperity's sake, to authorize Martha and Frank to, to wrap this up with some kind of memorandum of understanding or agreement, or whatever we want to call it.
We may call on you to make the motion, so you can say all that again.
All right, let me write it down.
DJ?
Yeah, and I, just some things, I'll try not to read all of it. It's my thought process that it's the council's job to represent the best interests of all our residents and all of our other landing, owning, taxpaying stakeholders in Morrisville. In this case, the HSNC organization is comprised of both. They're a separate legal entity, and they also have many Morrisville residents as members themselves. So I was thinking, for discussion's sake, it might be more fair and equitable to both. I was hoping that they would consider revising the request to more accurately, accurately reflect what the $14,654 actually became while in the town's safekeeping. An exact figure estimate is not available, but an estimate of $55,000 has been put forth in a letter from Mr. Seth Paul Rothey on behalf of HSNC in a letter dated, and it's in the brief, November 17th, 2014. A figure in that range, I think, is fair to HSNC, to HSNC's Morrisville residents, and to all the other taxpaying residents and stakeholders to which the Morrisville Town Council is charged with representing. Furthermore, a dollar finger closer to the amount actually, what they actually became while in the town's safekeeping would prevent a shift of the financial burden of this important road improvement to the town's taxpayers, many of which are actually HSNC members themselves. And they actually directly benefit from the valuable quality of life-enhancing services provided with our town funds. And these funds are already feeling pressure from a number of other circumstances. So I'm in favor of a full credit, but it's just somewhere between the $14,000 and the 8%. So I think it's just sort of a matter of finding where that is. Because as Benjamin Frantin said, you watch out for your pennies, and the dollars will take care of themselves. And I'm very much in favor of what you just echoed, the settlement agreement of some sort of MOU.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else have any comments or questions at this point?
Yeah, I mean, I just want to, are we allowed to make a comment? Do you want to vote first and then?
No, no, let's, if there's any discussion to be had, let's have it now.
Well, I just want to, I want to thank the staff and the HSNC board for working on getting the yes solution and acknowledge that this was, as we said last time, a very difficult situation and I think all parties have done their best to arrive at a credit solution. And I think it speaks volumes for our staff and how hard they've worked over the years to make this happen. And I'm now looking forward to us moving forward and them commencing with their plans for a learning center. So many members of the HSNC and the children can benefit from that. So just want to thank you, everybody, and I'm in favor of voting for this.
Okay. Michael, Rick, any?
No, I don't.
I just wanted to say a few words that 30 years ago, I believe that the intent of the money was to make road improvements. And here we are, and I believe the intent of this resolution is to do that. So we've come full circle and have found a remedy to this outstanding request and I support it. And I would also like to make sure that we have good documentation going forward, including clear resolution of this issue.
Eric Prenton Johnson?
I am ready to move forward. I think this is a good resolution and I agree with Martha's recommendation about language to authorize the town manager and town attorney to enter into an agreement.
Yeah, I think that's smart. And I appreciate everyone's research that everyone did on this. It's difficult when you're going back 30 years and the records aren't entirely clear. And I think, I think the resolution is a fair compromise for both parties. Certainly, the town will benefit greatly from the $300,000 plus that they're going to put into those roads. I know that they're very anxious to get going. There's aviation, there's a lot of activity on that road and I know just recently I've heard of more, more activity coming, coming to that road. So I think everything we can do to encourage better traffic flow, certainly better safety is to be commended. So looking forward to seeing the learning center come out of the ground, seeing the road improvements made. I agree with what most people have talked about as far as memorializing a more, I guess, a more legal MOA, whatever we want to call it as part of the resolution. So with that, if there's any further discussion, now's the time.
Okay. Make a motion to approve.
Second. Hold on. It's got to, it's got to be a little bit more than that. Chris, could you make the, or state it and let Michael?
Right. So perhaps, Michael, the motion would be to approve resolution 2015-08 and to authorize the town attorney and the town manager to memorialize the agreement with HSNC consistent with the terms of the resolution. Was that your motion?
You can make the motion. I'll second.
Okay, so I guess that's my motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes 7-0. Thank you very much for everyone's work on that. Next up is the consent agenda. There are four items. Quickly, there are items 2015-005, resolution to appoint chair and vice chair of Board of Adjustments, 2015-006, resolution to amend fee schedule for fire department fees, 2015-001, approved budget ordinance amendment to close that NC 54 multi-use path project, capital project, and 2015-007, resolution to accept Kits Creek Phase 3 streets. And does anyone want to remove anything from that consent agenda? Okay.
Make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries. Let's take a 10-minute break before we get into the work session where we're going to cover road pay. Is that okay, Blake? Okay, you're the man, so on that side. And then we'll talk about legislative agenda and we also have a closed session tonight. So it's a quarter of, let's see everyone here back by 8 o'clock.
Evening. I'm going to talk to you about the road maintenance program. Really, it's the state of, kind of the union address on town roads. Last time we talked about this was almost a year ago to the day. We were at the town retreat. And at that time, we were talking about the backlog of $4.21 million. We were talking about the proactive, reactive maintenance, different strategies to reduce that deficiency balance. And at the time, I said, well, we're going to be doing another pavement condition survey in October 2014. So no need to panic at that time to do anything drastic. Let's just see what the results of those and then develop a plan going forward. And the town council, they did better than that. Because in the fiscal year 2015 budget, you did give more money for roads. You gave another $300,000 which leads towards that backlog. So we have completed the pavement condition survey of 2014. We do know where we're at. So what I'm going to tell you about tonight is, is really where we went from the $4.21 to where we are now in the backlog and how we got there. I'm also going to talk about the funding that we're doing in fiscal year 2015 and the fact that that's going to have going forward on the backlog. So just kind of a refresher of our maintenance program. What we do is we do a pavement condition survey every two years on all the roads. And again, we just finished it October 2014. The next one's going to be October 2016. We do this by hiring an outside consultant that's an expert at doing this kind of work. And they drive the roads and they record all the defects on each road, on an intersection, segment by segment type basis. And they do a PCR, pavement condition rating, now they're calling it PCI, Pavement Condition Index, same thing, on all the roads. And they also categorize all the different defects. And then with that, they determine the cost to fix those defects. And they put a, put a report together and using that report, we prioritize our road maintenance program. And what we want to start doing with our road maintenance program, really continue doing, because we have already started, is, is doing proactive maintenance versus reactive maintenance, which is more of a traditional model. And what I mean by proactive maintenance is, looking back at this curve that we've seen before in a typical pavement deterioration curve, and we talked about this quite a bit, is over time, you go from 100 PCI, our PCR downs, and it decreases as road ages. Now, the optimum time to fix a road is really at this point here. And what they're saying is if you fix it here, it's going to cost you a dollar versus if you wait to fix it down here, what happens is you've got accelerated deterioration of the road, exponential increases in costs, so you end up paying $4 to $5 according to this chart. We did analysis on this based on town roads. We came up with similar numbers. We were actually three to four times. So we validated that this curve does work. The only difference is, this was showing around 18 years and in Morrisville, that tipping point is more closer to about 15 years, is what we found. So that's when we have to start doing proactive maintenance, which is really just taking the top surface off and putting it back. You're talking just two inches there. Versus the reactive maintenance is the road is further degraded, you've got to rip it out curb to curb, and you're going down 6 to 8 inches and putting 6 to 8 inches asphalt. So that's where you get that multiplier effect. 6 inches, 2 inches, 3 times, 8 inches, 2 inches, 4 times. So it's pretty simple, the math on that. So Morrisville now has 46.47 miles of roads that we maintain. So in our books, it's a $50 million plus item and they last about 15, 20 years. So not too long, so they're a pretty high maintenance cost in order to keep those up. So we look at our road growth over time. In 2008, we had 25.85 miles. And in July of 2014, with our Powell Bill report, we got to 46.47. That's an 80% increase in our road miles in that six-year period of time. So we look at our history of spending money on the maintenance of roads. And I've been talking to the council now since 2011 on these road maintenance. So we've been doing this a long time. And the ones that've been in the council have heard this presentation, different versions of it, the same theme, of course, over and over again. But the town council has responded. We have got more money. You know, if you look at what we were spending in 2000, in fiscal year 2011, we were spending $412,000. And what, important thing to see here is, we're showing Powell Bill funds here. And we're, this is the total allocation of Powell Bill funds. The rest of it is town funds. Of course, we can actually put all the Powell Bill into road maintenance solely because we have other town funds for other things that we have in the town operations for maintenance, like parking lots and sidewalks and that sort of thing. So we have been putting quite a bit of money into roads. 858,000 in 2012, 665 in 13, 931 in 14. And of course, with that extra $300,000 you're given, we're able to put 1.16 million into So what effect is this going to have on our balance? I'm going to show you shortly. What we were doing in 13, the two years that we were, we're working on bringing down those balances in 13 and 14, is, on this chart, you're seeing, the white is reactive type maintenance and the yellow is, is a proactive maintenance, getting to them before, earlier in that curve. And as you can see, we're starting to do some proactive work. Again, the more money we have, the more proactive work that we can do. In 2014, we're seeing more yellow, more proactive work, so we're kind of saving as much money as we can so we can bring down that balance. And when we look at the pavement condition survey, I think some of you are surprised to see that it went up to $5.24 million from the $4.21. Since we're putting in that, you know, seems like some good money there, but we didn't catch up. So we looked at this very carefully and said, well, is this number correct? You know, is this, is this really what should have happened? So to look at that a little bit more closely, just to kind of reconcile it, our outstanding balance in October 2012 was $4.21 million. When we looked at the roads that we fixed, they were better in this pavement condition survey by 1.2 million. So that's the stuff that we fixed that showed up in the report as being zero cost. And the ones we didn't fix over the last two years got worse by 2.2 million. So the net effect is 1.03 million. Now, 2.2 million is 1.1 million a year that they're getting worse. Now, does that really make sense at 1.1 million a year? Well, what we do know is, between the last pavement condition survey of November 2010 to October 2012, they got worse there by $950,000 a year. So, and the one previous, we didn't do quite the same analysis on it, but just looking at the numbers here, you can see that even with the money we put in, it got worse by 1.18 million. So it was over $600,000 a year getting worse. So traditionally, we've been, we've been upwards in the, in the high 600s to now upwards of 1.1 million. So we looked at that and we said, are these numbers right? So what we did was, we looked at their numbers and we were very, it was, this year's very unique in that we did the pavement condition survey at the same time we're putting projects out to bid. So now we have an apples and apples. Because the pavement condition survey, when you do it, that's, that's a moment in time. That's what it costs then. Six months a year later, it's going to cost more. So these roads here that we fixed at 1.2 million, it really cost, we put 1.6 million in, but they got worse before we got to them. So that's traditionally what's going to happen with this. But what was unique about this year was, we could look at our fiscal year 2015 program, we had actual costs, bidding numbers that we put out in October. And we had actual costs from, done by the consultant. So what we were able to do was compare those numbers and say, how close are his estimates? We found that they were within 13%. So they're 13% lower. So what we did is, we took all the costs in the report and we increased them by 13%. So we kind of calibrated their model to, to be, to be closer to real life.
So the, Matt, I'm sorry.
If you have a question.
So the consultants' estimates were 13% too high or too low?
Too low.
Okay. Wow.
So we use our, we calibrated the model. So what we can say is, we're quite confident this, this 5.24 million is correct. We did look at it line by line, street by street, looked at all the changes and all the numbers to look at, is there anything that looks funny? And what we can say is, the numbers are not overstated. If there's anything, some of the numbers were a little bit low on some other streets, but they're not overstated. So this is not a, a number that could be $4 million. No, it's, it's 5.24 million and in my opinion, a little bit higher than that. But it's within the realm of acceptable limits. So comfortable with that number. I'm not, I don't want to give you a number that's overstated and I want to be sure to give you a number that's reasonable and understated, if anything. So when we look at, why did it go up 1.1 million? Does that part make sense? So we know the 5.24 makes sense, but is the increasing, or how much it's getting worse on a yearly basis than 1.1 million? Does that really make sense? Well, looking back at this curve that we've looked at before, this was done in November of 2010, and it's basically categorizing all our roads by age groups. And what was important to note at this time was, 11 to 15 years, we had 44% of our roads, 13.71 miles. That was back in November of 2010. Now, this pavement condition survey is being done, of course, in October of 2014. That's four years later. Well, what happens in four years is 80% of these roads that are sitting here move over there. So this wave of roads, which is, we have more roads in that category than the other category, are all coming at us. So they're all aging out and needing work, all at the same time. So when we did this analysis before to figure out the costs of the roads, we found out that really, these costs are very little in the first five, 10 years. You have some costs happening in 11 to 15, but this is probably more the 13 to 15-year range that most of these costs are occurring at. But this is where this exponential increase in cost occur, when you come across and you get into the 16 to 20. So that's what we're seeing. We're seeing a whole wave and slug of roads are coming at us, are aging out at the same time, increasing in costs because they've aged out. And that's what we're looking at with that 1.1 million. So it's getting bigger from the 950, from the previous two years. And it's getting bigger because we've got this big wave of roads coming at us. So that makes sense. So this could be telling us that it's going to get worse before it gets better. That's kind of what we said before. So we may not be through it yet. Once we get through this slug, we actually could be making some headway with putting in 1.2 million a year. So over a long period of time, we could catch up. Our consultant that's done our, our report is not concerned at our funding levels because they're seeing us being much better than the average town. Again, our roads are much newer than the average towns. We started out much better. But we've also started doing proactive maintenance a lot sooner than other towns. So we're kind of ahead of the curve to a certain degree. So we're really sitting in not too bad a position. So what are we going to do in fiscal year 2015? Some of these projects have been done, but we're focusing on this proactive maintenance because how you get, how you catch up is you've got to do the proactive maintenance. You can't do reactive. You can't do the worst streets first. And that was a traditional model. So if they're further down the curve, the worst streets don't get much worse in cost. So you've got to focus on the ones that are tipping over in that curve. Catch them early, you fix them cheap. And that's what we've started doing big time in fiscal year 2015 and we started in 2014, where we didn't actually fix perimeter first. Perimeter park is the worst road in town. We're holding off on that. We're fixing these roads, trying to get to them early. So the $300,000 you gave us did a tremendous amount for us. Because you can see that 300,000 here gets us sans air and crap tree crossing, which we wouldn't have been able to do without that additional money. We fixed everything in Preston Grand, so that street, they're good now for another 15 years. So there's some really good work that we're doing. So there's some really good work that we're doing. Now, what is our criteria for selecting roads? Well, it's really the highest rate of return, the biggest bang for a buck. That's what we're trying to do. It's a whittle way, and that's 5.24 million. That's what we have to concentrate on. So severity of defects, again, is another criteria that's important. Age of roadway, extremely important, because we know the roads act very, they're very homogeneous in that way, that they all kind of break down at a very similar period in time, around that 15-year range. We know the ages of them, so we can predict that. Proximity of the roads, and that's important in that when we go into someplace like Preston Grand, we could have delayed a few cul-de-sacs, some of the better ones, but that wouldn't have saved any money, because then you'd have to remobilize to come back just to do a cul-de-sac. They don't have to truck the equipment back. They're all right there. Economy of scale, we finish everything at the same time, and that's the cheaper way to do it. You know, less important is the pavement condition rating or pavement condition index, road classification, the volumes, they all play a little bit into it, but they're not as big a criteria. And of course, we have to match the projects to the available funding. So what are we doing in fiscal year 2016? Well, we're going to do Western Estates, because Western Estates was built in 1999. We're talking it's going to be 16 years old. People that live in that neighborhood, they can look at the roads and they'd say, yes, we need to start doing some more there. You know, we're a little bit behind the curve on that, but not much. Carpenter Park, actually same age, better condition, actually. Optimum time to do it. Cudrow is perfect to do it now. We can fix that really efficiently. Green Drive, Stella, Clements, and Parkside Valley Drive, built 1999 to 2000. That first half from Davis to Willingham, we have to do that. We had to do a big patch there last year. We have to do the rest of it this year. Air Tech, Walter in 1998, as well as Fankelup Church, and another bit of work on Slater in the intersection. Then you've got Barbie and Page Street. So a lot of proactive maintenance, we're talking in the range of 1.2, 1.3 million dollars of work. And what are we delaying, and this is really by design, is not fixing the worst roads first. So we've been holding off on perimeter. 939,000, McCrimmon, 300,000, International Drive, 493, Southport. We're talking 1.85 million dollars worth of work there. So we know there's still, we're still able to hold off on International and Southport, and that's just that portion that used to be called Triangle. That's between NC 54 and International, that small piece of Southport. They're still holding together. They're going to be an expensive fix when we fix them, but we still have some life left in that roadway. And same with International, it's hanging in there. So it's not a dire straits. We've got to fix that today. But you have to evaluate every year and see how long it's going to hold together. I'm surprised it's held that long, but it's really doing remarkably well, considering. Perimeter is a little rougher, and we did some patching on there last week, and just to kind of hold it together, try to get a few more years out of it, maybe. And Public Works is going to patch some of the smaller holes herself. So that's their kind of strategy, is to delay those as long as we can. But it's going to be a mix of proactive, reactive, because there's a, you know, there's a big slug of work here. So we're going to have to chip away at some of these while we're still doing some proactive work, but we're going to be evaluating every year. And the big time for these roads to fall apart is kind of after the winter. So when you'll see then, how much more degradation you're going to have.
Blake?
Yes.
On those four, can we expect those to actually increase in more cost? Or is that pretty much, it's not going to get any worse?
They flatten out, because the repair for those, we've done the analysis on them, we've got the design, is a full debt reclamation.
Okay.
So full debt reclamation is going to be a very similar cost, whether we do it now or do it three years from now. But the question is, we can't let it deteriorate where it causes trouble for the drivers. So we've got to kind of do a little bit of proactive maintenance on the roadway and fixing the potholes and being diligent in that. But every year, we can delay a road like that, we could potentially save $200,000. You put in $5,000, $10,000 to save $200,000, you can put that $200,000 into one of these other roads, and you can get a lot of mileage out of that, because you're catching them at the top of the curve.
$10,000 is patching a stretch, it's not?
No, it's patching pieces.
Pieces here and there.
Pieces here and there, just holding it together.
And you guys are tracking by road, where you're doing the patching, so we can sort of get an analysis of when it's actually getting to be more expensive to patch?
Well, we did some patching.
Are you keeping track, though?
Yes.
Of where and when? Okay.
Correct. We did the major patches by contractor last week, and that was $5,000. And we're going to do some patching with our own forces. That's going to be much less than that.
Materials and staff.
It's just materials and staff time. And we have the ability to do that. I think it's more efficient for us to do the small pothole type patches.
Okay, thank you.
Now, what is an acceptable deficiency balance? When you look at the 5.24 million and you say, well, we've got to fix it all now, well, that's not really realistic. You're not going to have zero deficiency balance. So a reasonable deficiency balance is about two years of your degradation. So if your degradation is about 1.1 million, that'd be 2.2 million. So if we've got 5.2 million, 2.2 million is reasonable deficiency balance, we're only talking $3 million of a backlog. We already know the 1.85 million of that backlog, and the rest of it is more the proactive maintenance side of it. So we're really not too badly off. We're actually, we're doing pretty good. So what would be our funding strategy over the next five, perhaps 10 years? I think really, all we have to do is kind of stay the course of what we're doing now. If we give the additional 300,000 over fiscal year 2014, or which we gave in fiscal year 2015, the same amount of money, I think that's going to be very effective over a period of time. And all we have to do then is go back and evaluate when our next pavement condition survey is, in October of 2016, and see where we're at at that point. Like I said, it might be, we may not have made much headway at that point, because we're, it's going to get a little bit worse before it gets better. But I think we don't need to be pumping a huge amount of money into it. If we stay the course, I think we'll be going in the right direction.
Okay. Appreciate that very thorough presentation. Open up for questions real quick here. Thank you.
Yes. Excellent presentation. I really appreciate you differentiating between the proactive and the reactive, because that really brings the message that you conveyed to us last year to life, really. It's kind of disappointing that we're not quite to the plateau, but roads are degrading. You explained the life cycle of, you know, the same age of the roads and so forth. One way to consider, maybe in the future, do not redo the presentation, but if we did not do the proactive repairs to some of the roads in fiscal year 2015 and 2014, those roads would have degraded further. And there was probably a higher curve that you would be presenting to us tonight if we did not do that preventative maintenance. And that's a much higher figure, and that's really where we have savings.
That is correct. You understand it very well.
Yes. So that, you know, is a good message to share, in addition to some of the graphs that you have, if you're ever, you know, developing other graphs. Because that is our opportunity savings through that approach.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. That's just what I wanted to share.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Could I piggyback on that? Sorry.
No, go ahead.
It's kind of like, when people mostly think about investing, they think about investing and getting interest and increasing revenue. But in this case, it's investing to reduce future expenses. So that's sort of a different way to look at it, but it's a really good investment.
Correct.
Sorry, Liz.
Sure.
Good investment. So they ask, is the same level of funding as last year? And then, is that 300 enough? I mean, where are we with Pell Bill? And how is that increasing or decreasing in this equation?
Again, I don't have the exact numbers on Pell Bill, but I expect it to be reasonably around the same number. So it's not going to change too significantly. So yeah, the same level of funding, I think, is the course we need to go.
Yeah, just one comment. I just want to thank you for, you've completed most of Ridgemont, other neighborhoods I've seen. So thank you for your hard work. And where I get discouraged, but I feel better after your presentation, is when you look at the slide and you see, you know, when are we ever going to catch up? Because the number of deficiency is so much higher. But I think TJ made a good point of, it's, you know, proactive is going to prevent future expense. So once I get my arms around that, but, you know, hopefully we'll get there.
All right, Chris Carter?
Yeah, I sort of hit the panic button earlier. But then you said the consultant wasn't terribly concerned about our funding, and your recommendation for fiscal year 16 was to maintain the additional 300,000 in funding. So I'll take, you know, that makes, that's good. I still worry that that may not be enough, but this is all new to me, so I'll go back and look at it again. But if you're comfortable with it, then that's really all that I need to know. I did have a, maybe a technical question. I thought you said that where that peak is, it's normally around the 18th year, according to the manual, but in Morrisville, it was around the 15th year. Do you know why that would be?
Well, every, the conditions are different everywhere. So, you know, soil conditions are different, you know, the
Heat, humidity, and
Correct. Freeze thaw cycles, those type of things. The standards are different. So even though his curve says 18 years, even the consultant has said 15 years is the cycle that they have been recommending to everybody.
Okay.
And we proved that that was true in Morrisville.
Okay. That's it.
And we do have a soil condition here that affects the compaction capability. And when you affect the compaction of the base, that deteriorates, that causes the roads to deteriorate quicker. So tritic soils in our area are very difficult. So I think the 15, 16-year timeframe seems to be working out, and it's working out according to the data that we're collecting.
Well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Blake. It's a key piece of our budget deliberation, so appreciate you weighing in and looking forward to seeing how we can help you. Thanks. All right. Next up is our legislative agenda. This is continuation of what we started two weeks ago. Martha, what is the, what is the goal of tonight's work session with this?
The council asked to continue to talk about this before you consider developing a legislative agenda. So staff has not prepared any additional work. The session starts tomorrow. We still have opportunity and still have sort of a discussion, I think, about how, if, when we want to work on developing that relationship with the Wake County delegation. And so I think that's an important thing to talk about. I did get some ideas from Councilmember Schlink about ideas council may want to consider. I don't know if everybody got this, but I have it. If you did not get it, then we could talk about that if you like.
So if we, if we wanted to put together a legislative agenda, we don't want to wait too long.
I agree.
If, I guess I'd like to poll the council a little bit. If we, it'd be nice to be able to kind of settle this tonight, maybe get it written up and be able to finalize it in two weeks' end, so we can actually submit it. Otherwise, it's going to be too little, too late if we don't kind of put our thoughts forward to the legislator. So let's try to get a real good idea of what we want to do. And then Martha, did that give you enough time, a couple of weeks, to put this together? And so that we could
Yeah, I think the ideas that Councilmember Schlink has put forward, it would really be council that needs to decide whether they want to incorporate that into a legislative agenda.
Right, I'm just talking about the timing of it, whatever we include in it. So if we can kind of agree on ideas tonight, would two weeks be enough for you to kind of edit that and get it back to us? And then we'll hopefully can, do we vote on it necessarily, or just agree to send it?
I think a vote would be appropriate that way.
Okay.
A legislator would know it's coming from the full council.
All right.
Can I make a quick comment? Because the last time we talked about this, I had, I had mentioned maybe adding two additional ones as well. And I said I'd email everybody. But last time when we spoke, we also talked, and you brought this up, mayor brought this up, we also talked about the fact about not making it too long, keeping it And so the more I kind of thought about it, I decided not to email you all and tell you about the two. I think you're right. I think the mayor's right. I think the legislative agenda needs to be focused and not real lengthy. So, and I think the two items that I was asking about are probably not the two we should concentrate on. So I think what we have here is, I did not, I'm not privy to what Michael
Yeah, because I asked. So let's do this. Liz, I'd say, I know in Michael's case, I read the emails, and I think it's worth talking about. I don't know if it's something, I think some of them may require a little bit more research. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think we can work through it tonight if
But let's, I want to give you the opportunity to, if you do want to talk about them, we can talk about it. But I think, I guess I wouldn't change my general idea of less is more with this. If we hit them with, you know, six or seven things, it's just going to get lost. But if we can think of, let's say, three things that we can move forward, I think that would be the most effective thing. So, but let's, there's nothing wrong with hearing different ideas. Did we in fact have a shortlist at this point? Did we?
Tim's offered to copy this email, which I can have him do, and I'll pull it up here to read, so that everybody can get a copy. Councilmember Schlink, would you prefer to present, or do you want me to present?
Well, I guess before that, were there, did we, what's on this slide here? Can you advance that?
I think the slide reviewed last year's items, which included the privilege license issue, House Bill 150, the zoning and design and aesthetic controls measure, the Lake Jordan rules, and something else, the historic rehabilitation tax credits.
Okay. So that gives us an idea of what we've moved forward in the past. Let's go ahead and hear from Councilmember Schlink and Mayor Proton Johnson, if you'd like to talk about your items, that's fine. Michael, I'll give the floor to you for a couple of minutes.
Yeah, it won't take very long. You guys kind of know my style. I'll read something in the newspaper and see that some other town's doing it and think, why can't, you know, hey, efficiencies, why can't we streamline that? Why can't we kind of look at and incorporate it? So last week, I sent everybody, I think, I'll do that, I mean, not asking for a response, about what Carboro was doing. And it identified that they were going to do a local bill, it looked like to me, but to levy a tax on hotels, so they could do economic development. I said, well, if they're going to try and do that, maybe we should. So that was one of the ones I sent to Martha, and then Martha sent me back. She, staff couldn't research it, and that's fine. So I picked up the phone and I talked with Carboro, and the newspaper got it wrong. They already have the authority, so that one we can drop.
Okay.
They have that authority like other communities across the state, but none in Wake County. Wake County does that. So then in Sunday's paper, there were two from Cary. One of them was, and I talked with the mayor about it, because what I do when I send an email, usually to Martha, I'll courtesy copy the mayor, just to kind of make sure that, you know, I'm, it's not, I'm not wasting her time nor staff's time if I do something, if I'm asking for something. But, so that one and Cary, there were two. One was for staff, and that's your opinion. I don't care about that one, about, I mean, I thought maybe it'd help you, it would be easements. Cary is going ahead and doing a local bill on easements, so that the town council doesn't have to do it, the town staff could. I thought, well, maybe that's effective for them. And then the other one was, and this was just, again, the newspaper.
Sorry, Michael, that particular one, the easement one, do we?
I think that'd be up to Martha, if she wanted to include it or not.
We're not going to worry about that one.
I can respond after.
That's fine, that's fine. Okay.
Yeah, that was your, that was your preview, I just thought.
And did you have a third one?
Well, yeah, the third one and one more is the, Cary had two, that was a local bill. They were asking for authority, and we might already have it, you said, to do, if, they have historical properties too, but if they choose to sell them down the road, that historical designation would go with it. And they cited a building in Cary. It was in the Cary newspaper, so whatever. And that one, I think we could discuss or find out, it might take some research, maybe we already have that. I was thinking of the Pew House, because we know that it's not on the, it hasn't been on the CIP list. Previous town councils had looked at that and always had thought of surplus property. I'm just throwing it out there as a toolbox, not for that. I'm just throwing it out there as a toolbox, not for that discussion, but I'm talking to Liz, because she, you've seen it. I mean, you've been around.
So I think my response to that was, isn't it protected through the landmark designation? Maybe that Ben taught.
If we sell it.
You know, there, at the development finance workshop that Martha and I went to, there was something about, that you, I recall something where you might not be able to sell it with that restriction, and I, so I need to double check that.
With what, with what restriction?
So if you put a historic preservation deed restriction and maintenance agreement on a structure, you may not, the, the public entity, there's a possibility the public entity may not be able to sell it, which it sounds like this Cary legislation is trying to get around. Let me double check that, just to make sure I've got it right, but I do remember something from the workshop that Martha-
But that's all, since Cary's already doing, I thought it meant it'd be a local bill. And the last one is my favorite, impact fees. I bring up every year. And this one is for, and I did a little, this is from prior, previous research that the town already has, but again, we heard about roads. I'm asking for it just for multifamily. So if somebody comes in here, right now, single families, payment and loofah, they can't. Multifamilies don't do that. So I'm an advocate that we should level the playing field. And Cary got that authority in 2007, and that was adjusted to the article that I referred to in the email. But, and that one, again, in previous years, when I brought this up, everybody says, well, if you ask, you're going to get in trouble, you'll upset them. And I just tell you, from my personal experience working with schools, I think if we do it in a professional manner, that they understand. And again, I'm just trying to be an advocate. I think unless you ask, you're never going to get it. So I'm in favor of asking for impact fees for multifamily, so it goes back in and gives us another approach to payment and loofah fees, a continuous approach. No, we don't have a lot of land left for multifamily, but if we did, Cary already charges it, so, I mean, I think it puts us on a level, playing field with Cary, and other towns can do it too, I believe. I just haven't researched it, but I'm pretty sure Raleigh can. And you don't have to charge the same fees, you can charge a different fee, which would be fine with me.
May I offer a clarifying point? So right now, under the North Carolina General Statutes, this ability to charge a payment and loofah fee for recreation is linked to this, is in the subdivision there. So if there's a subdivision, we can charge it, but Councilmember Schlink's absolutely right, if there's not a subdivision, then we can't charge it. So if there's an existing parcel that's developed, where no subdivisions required, and there's development of an apartment complex, for example, we can not charge recreation and loofah. This legislation that Councilmember Schlink referenced does allow Cary to do that even when there isn't a subdivision. That allows you then, whenever there's an apartment development, if you want to charge a recreation impact fee, you can, which is good, because, I mean, that can be a lot of units. And that can really contribute to helping to protect that.
Educate me, what makes something a subdivision or not?
So a subdivision of, like, so creating lots, taking a larger tract and creating separate lots for ownership and sale, you're subdividing that.
Park West Village is the only one we've done that way.
Yeah, now, Park West Village, we've got the, a payment associated with the rezonings-
Exactly, that was nice.
For the mixed use rezoning.
So are apartment buildings ever subdivisions?
So on, in some cases, a larger tract might be subdivided, part of it used for an apartment building, part of it for something else. Sometimes there might be a subdivision associated with right-of-way. So there are cases where there isn't, there is a subdivision associated with apartments. Of course, with single family, there is almost always a subdivision, as you take a tract and carve it up into lots for sale.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
As an example, the apartments that were going to come in next to Walmart, would that be an example of one that was subdivided?
So in that case, the lot, I think, already exists. Now, if they're, I don't know if they're, if they're using an existing lot, it, there could be a situation where there is no subdivision. But I don't know exactly.
I didn't know if it had been subdivided off of a larger piece for apartments.
I think, I think, I mean, it had already been subdivided earlier, I think, so now-
About the carryover. If it, if it was subdivided previously, and then another developer came in to develop the apartment complex, like what's happened?
Yeah, I don't think-
I think I can answer that.
I think it's a subdivision that's occurring with, with all of the bills.
Might be, we've only had one piece of property, one apartment complex that's paid, to my knowledge, Park West Village.
And we didn't get it through the subdivision, we got it through the rezoning process.
Sounds to me like, whether or not it's subdivided or not, it also has an impact on the town that we're looking to try to mitigate through getting some funds. So I would lean towards sort of doing away with the little legalese part and just say, yes, if there's a building, if we can get some kind of mitigation for the effect, I'd be in favor, if we think that the legislature isn't going to push back, like, stop talking about impact fees, we don't want to hear it. If it's been a little while, we might be able to gentle that.
I wouldn't call it that.
And we wouldn't call it that, obviously. But I'm sorry, just, that was per facilitation.
Chris, you look like you want to-
Frank, are there, do you know if there's going to be a limit on the number of bills that legislators can introduce this year?
I think the House has 10, yeah. I'm not sure it applies to local bills, though.
Oh, yeah.
I was going to say, I think, really, this is a parkland payment and loofah, it's not an impact fee.
Right.
Impact fee's another can of worms and gets all kinds of people excited.
I apologize.
Parkland payment and loofah is a little more mother and apple pie.
Yeah.
And so I think Ben explained it well. If you have a, a tract of land that's not being carved up into pieces, technically, there's no authority to have a parkland payment and loofah, whereas if you cut it up into lots, then there is authority. Parkland recreation payment and loofah authority exists. So if the property, if the tract has to be rezoned, when it comes through rezoning, you can ask the developer, would you be willing to make a parkland payment and loofah? But there's no legal authority to require it.
Right. And certainly, anything, anything that's already in the works would be grandfathered, I would imagine, from this. So the, regardless of what's happening at the Shiloh area, it's, it wouldn't apply, right? At this point? That's a, that's a question.
Could you say that again?
At some point, things are grandfathered, I would imagine, right? If, I don't know how far along the Shiloh apartment complex is, but at some point, I would imagine they would have, they would go under the old rules and not be subject to this, if this was put through and approved.
My, my understanding is that the subdivision has to occur as part of the development of the actual project in order to make-
Well, I'm saying if we, if we get this permission from the General Assembly to do what Cary does-
Oh, sure, yeah, you'll have vested projects.
Is it too, is it too late to affect the Walmart Shiloh Grove, or Shiloh apartment?
We don't have an active project, whereas we do have one over Slater and Carrington Mill that's in the review process.
Okay.
It's your same logic, it won't, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. It'll be covered, it's vested.
All right, so that's, that's an interesting thing to look at. Liz, I think you had a couple that you wanted to talk about.
I, my world, they were, well, there were two of them, and they were transportation-related. And I, I, of course, transportation, number one issue, always looking for additional funding. I don't, I personally think our legislative agenda should focus on the privilege license more than anything else. I think that there was some traction under, there's some traction about recovering that revenue loss to municipalities, and I would like to, I'd like us to focus on that more than anything else. I think that's where we potentially, I'm not sure this year, but lay the groundwork this year for next year, potentially getting some of that revenue back. And I'd prefer that we, if we're going to start to ask for revenue options, that that be the one we focus on in the legislative agenda. Can I also, just add one other thing, too. When, when we do finally adopt a legislative agenda, the mayor has to go defend it in front of the Wake delegation. So I think we all need to think about that, too. He's going to have to stand up there, he's going to have to sell our story about why these items are important to us, and then he's going to have to field some important questions. So whatever we choose to put on that agenda, we should keep all that in mind. And that, some of those, they're, they're, they're pretty tough sometimes, so.
What transportation ones did you have in mind? Because I, I still think that it's such a big issue that, excuse me, we should take a rifle shot and, you know, which bill are you?
Well, I pulled them from, remember, we had this discussion last time, there were, there were multiple legislative goals that the league has on their list. And, you know, quite frankly, the league's going to go after those on our behalf. And I'm confident that if there's any success to come, that the league will, will do it. I'm not sure that we need to focus, that's just my opinion. But they were, they were, they were about, like, the support legislation enabling municipalities to access a portion of proceeds for any statewide transportation bond. I probably would not, after, especially after some comments Benjamin made over the weekend, I probably would, at the retreat, I would, I'd not move forward on that one. And then seek legislation to authorize state bond to provide low-cost loans to local governments and authorities for infrastructure.
Okay.
I'm confident the league can-
Yeah.
Can track those for us.
Yeah, so we're, we're not doing this by ourselves necessarily, there are other folks fighting our behalf. Were there other, certainly, I think the privilege license tax should be on there. I don't, I don't, I'm not willing to, even, even if you think it's a lost cause, I'm not willing to accept it until it's, it's done. I made some, a lot of promises last year about making that, that change. So I think we, if we don't mention it, I think you accept it, and I'm not willing to accept the change right now, so. Is everyone in agreement that at least that should be on there?
Yes. And what I would, what I would maybe consider characterizing it is not, to obviously mention the privilege license tax in particular, but the, the message really, I think the Cary, Cary mayor mentioned it well in the news article I read, it's more of a hold harmless request. I don't know that we necessarily care where the money comes from. I mean, it can be from a lot of different sources. At the end of the day, we just want kind of a break even. That's all I'm asking for, is to keep a break even approach. So I, I don't know what your thoughts are, but that may include some of Michael's ideas as well, and not limit it to just a specific item, but to, to have it pretty broad. And as Liz said, you don't, you don't get that many asks, so the, the big ask is, let's just keep our funding level where it was.
The word recovery sounds positive.
Yeah.
What, one question is, what, once we approve the agenda, what's the, what's the strategy? I mean, is it, are we going to talk about the follow-up in terms of, you presenting to the delegation, you know, Cary, or you organize a meeting with, you know, all the Wake delegation, and we're running out of time, and that they're already going into session, so?
Yeah, we'll, I'll be, yes, yes to those questions. We will be developing a strategy in how to present this, and however that's most effective. I don't know that we're going to have a, a dinner with the Wake delegation at this point, but-
Yeah, it's probably not our time.
There, there's some things we can do. On the, on the parkland payment and loofah, sort of making all properties subject to that, is how I would paraphrase it. That's a local bill, is that presented differently? Is it on a different list? Is it, you know, is it outside of what, you know, so if someone could sort of give me a little background on that?
But a local bill really has to be introduced by your delegation, and typically, they're looking for 100% support for it to get introduced, and then I'll call it the courtesy privileges. Different delegations support different people's local bills. There is the ability to tack on, for example, I think the ones Councilmember Schlink mentioned is Cary's, we could ask to be tacked on to that, we could do that even outside of including it on our legislative agenda. When I communicated with Councilmember Schlink, I just, at this point, without doing some review, know how that works for us, if we have any issues that are different than Cary. And I think I was concerned about how we would convey why we asked for that without having the opportunity to figure that out. Just a timing for consideration of this legislative agenda.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And, and it really does go back to the message I got from our delegation last year was, we never see you or hear from you unless you want something, we need to know what's going on. And so that, for me, just sort of returns back to development of that relationship first.
Right, but if we wanted, is the, is the Cary one, is that being done this year?
I believe they were meeting with some members of the delegation, and that was included on their agenda. The article did not suggest support by the, in fact, as I read the article, they did say, "Don't be looking for anything," was the tenor of the article. So it did not indicate that there was support or not for what Cary was proposing.
Okay, well, I would, I would offer this to the council, that if we think there's some value in, in asking, whether it's tagging on to Cary's or doing it alone, I believe we've engaged, you know, most of the members of the Wake delegation on a fairly regular basis. I mean, I think we see them, and I don't think that they would treat us like strangers if we, if we wanted to look them up. So I think there's, not only do I, I like the idea of getting this payment and loofah from all development, as TJ mentioned, I mean, there's, you know, everyone impacts us, and I think a lot of people would be surprised, we don't get it from everybody. But I think there's some value in going through the process. It's not a big ask, it's not a, I don't think it's too terribly controversial, it's kind of extending what we already done, it's maybe in line with what Cary's asking for. And I think that's, what I'd like to find out more about is, is asking, you know, what exactly, what would it mean if we wanted to tag along with Cary? Is it similar enough that we could do that? Or would we be by ourselves? And I certainly don't mind having those conversations, but I think that's, you know, I think that's part of developing relationships. We do an awful lot with, without asking anything of them on a regular basis, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't hesitate at asking for some, that's their, that's kind of their job, that's our job. So I don't, I don't look at that as a hardship or anything negative about it. I think it's good to, you know, start developing the process, so.
Can I just ask to clarify? Who, was that comment made about us, the town of Morrisville? Where's that comment coming from? About all we ever do is ask?
I didn't mean it to sound that way. If we don't hear from you, except for Town Hall Day, or when you want us to advocate on your behalf, they, they want a formation of a relationship. Now, that was said to me by several of the legislation, when we did the Town Hall Day last year.
Was that coming from our Wake delegation, or just?
I'm not sure how to process that, because-
I, I hear that on the, on the statewide level, that, I mean, that's, that's a common-
That's who I'm talking about.
Yeah, not, not necessarily Wake County delegation, but on the statewide level, I hear that from other mayors. And it's, it's, the Mayor's Association had the same thing. It's like, we can't just go in front of these ladies and gentlemen when we need something. We have to engage and get relationships going, and I think there's a theme, so.
We only hear from some legislators when they run for office, so.
I was going to say, I thought we were working on relationships, clearly not with all, Ben. That's what that comment says. I think we have very strong relationships with some of our Wake delegation. Clearly, that, I guess I'm just trying to process that comment.
So I'm confused, because Cary already has the authority for the, what I'll call the payment and loofah authority.
Right, so my suggestion would be that, that's why I put that House bill in there. The research is real easy, you can go and research that House bill, take the language, boom, and it's done.
I thought you meant-
I agree.
I, I thought, I thought you meant-
I think you were talking about the mayor's comments, the mayor's comments.
So we can't, there's no piggybacking there.
We would have to introduce-
Right, and that's, that's a lot different.
It is very different.
That is a lot-
That's a local bill, but the piggyback one is the one for the other one that we could, and Martha's already explained that, the other two.
Okay, so, scratch.
This would be a pretty, I'm not saying- This would be a pretty, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, I'm saying it, it would be a pretty substantial effort for us to introduce a local bill to do this.
And maybe, you know, I, I guess I'd like to know what that process is, what it's about, and there's, you know, maybe we're going to get an early start in next year's then to.
And if staff feels like it would really benefit the town in a meaningful way, depending on what zoning's left and things like that.
And we've been successful on having local bills.
We've done it.
We've been very successful. That's why I, I don't understand this, this thing about we haven't built a relationship. We've built a very strong relationship, we've had local bills presented and adopted in the past, and we've been successful now, not on some other.
This would be like the MSD.
The council indulged me in asking the manager to see what the process is all about.
Yes.
And see if it's something, you know, whether it's this year or next year, but I think it's something we need to, you know, personally, I'd like to feel more comfortable, what, what does that mean? What is the process? I could definitely get behind this idea of payment in lieu for all developers. I mean, I, I think that's just an equitable thing, so.
It, I mean, it may not be that, I haven't handled a local bill, so, I mean, if it, if we've had good success in the past, then we shouldn't have an issue this time.
It's just asking them to introduce it, they introduce it, but it's, again, the blueprint is out there, it's already in 2007 House Bill 1213.
So, is that? They have a whole department group that will support or help us with writing the bill and getting it put into the right format and all that kind of stuff. We have to do some research on it.
Right.
But, but there's, there's legislative assistance for that.
Okay. And I guess including in that whole thing is a dead, sort of a deadline, you know, I mean, is this, you know, for this session, future sessions, what, when would we have to have our ducks in a row for this?
I, I don't know that particular date, but there, you are correct, there is a point in time in the legislature where all local bills, there's a deadline to have them introduced.
Okay, all right.
And I'm sorry, I'm happy if we decide not to do it, but I would just like staff to keep it in line for next year, so that we could get an earlier start and not have this.
I'm asking, I'm asking to, let's try this year, see, see what the schedule is, see what it takes, and then, you know, all kind of, you know, move together, because it, there may be a need for this next year, and that.
That'd be great.
We won't be wondering about the process, so. Is that something you could investigate, Martha? I know we hate to give you.
Yeah, Tim's, Tim, of course, as I mentioned, is going to help with leading the legislative agenda. I don't know that I can ask him today if we can turn that around for an item for approval the first February, I don't know that answer.
And, and that's part of the answer, you know, mayor, no, we had to have gotten it by the first of February, obviously, that might be out of the question. If it's the first of March, maybe that's a different answer, I don't know. But if you could find out for us, that would be great. So, I believe that kind of takes care of items on Michael's list. Liz had an idea, the privilege license tax, I think everyone agreed to have that on there. I think we have room for a couple more, if there's.
We have, we have a couple on here. Can, can we?
The readoptions are three.
Yeah. Can we go back and see what they were? To this. Who's got control? No, that's not it. We already had, we already have a few legislative goals that we've not met yet, so.
There they go.
Getting my flash.
We had four last year.
Okay, so we, we agree we're going to talk about this?
And maybe reworded to say hold harmless or whatever.
Yeah, okay. So, next is Jordan Lake rules.
Rich, any input? I don't know that he thinks there's anything we can do at this point.
Solar Bees out there buzzing around, and.
Yeah, basically, until that study completes.
Two, through three years?
It's one more year, so.
Okay, so.
The results of that, I don't think there's going to be much movement.
All right.
I think it might still be good to leave it on there, just say that we remain concerned and we're hopeful for the future, just to sort of not drop it off and reintroduce, or what do you think is the best strategy?
You could send then an email to them, and they'd love to hear you. Seriously, that's what I do.
Well, let's see what else is, what else is on here.
Okay.
This is. Does that, that's it? Does this happen?
This is important.
Last year, it was referred to the committee, and Ben, Ben keeps up with this one, and he's saying that perhaps if you want to keep this one active, it's different than just opposition to this bill, it would be support for design standards. Ben, you want to add anything?
No, no, that covers it.
Okay.
Yeah, we are expecting to see this effort to curtail design controls come back again. It's been a priority of the home builders.
Okay, next.
Still on the League, the League's still fighting that, too, with us.
Okay.
Okay.
This is a big one.
Tax credits did sunset. There's been discussion about asking them to be reinstated.
Okay.
And the League is doing that, too, right?
Yeah.
And Secretary Klutz of Cultural Resources, too, with the governor.
Did this one make the advocacy agenda?
I have seen this credit being mentioned. I've seen this credit being mentioned in the Mayor's Association, some of those emails and feeds. I think it would benefit Morrisville to have this tax credit. We don't have a lot of historic buildings, but we do have a few that would benefit from this. And I know towns across the state would really appreciate having this tax credit, because this is how they can revitalize their downtowns and their surrounding communities, so Morrisville would benefit as well.
Okay, are there any? Okay, so, there were four, I counted, sort of.
I think I dropped in the solar bee one, though.
Continuation.
Haven't dropped it yet, we're looking at everything.
I'm just, I want to, whatever we do to be, you know, have the.
Most impactful.
Yeah, impactful, so, privilege license, the, the new design, call it the redo of HB 150, and then the historic preservation tax credits. I know the League probably has at least the latter two on their plate, right, probably all three, but, and then we'll work on this local bill process as a, as a side, side project. Were there any others that anyone thought of? Okay. So, if it's okay with the council, I'd like to ask Martha to kind of craft a, an agenda with those three items on it.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we won't forget about Jordan Lake and the solar bees, but I think next, next year will probably be more effective.
But we can work on.
Did you mention that we support the NCLM entire agenda? Or is that a given?
Yeah, I don't think we can.
I think it would go a little extra to say that we, as a town, support that directly.
No.
We did do it last year.
Did we do it last year?
We supported the agenda in whole, and then called out the specifics.
As a part of our legislative agenda that we adopted? Oh, okay.
I think they appreciate that, I know that it would help us be more effective.
I think whether, I don't know if I'd support it and pull out stuff, that sounds a little.
No, I, you need to support it in whole or not mention it.
Yeah, I brought that up last time.
Yeah.
That got known, and you guys were right.
I didn't realize we did that, that.
Oh, yeah.
Any final thoughts here?
My only final thought, sorry, go ahead, sorry, go ahead.
I'm, I've had my final thoughts already.
My final thought is, I mean, I know that these guys are getting busy and going into session, but I do think we should make an attempt, maybe via the mayor, to contact some of these legislators and see if we could provide some kind of a session. I have a little heartburn that, I don't know who the, you know, some people in our delegation feel like we only want something when we ask something, but, you know, with all due respect, the town of Morrisville is, the entire town is in Senator Stein's district, and I think that, you know, we need to have him here. I think it's a reasonable request, and so I'd like you, mayor, if you could reach out to him, and.
Well, let's, um.
Let Martha sort of investigating the idea of hosting, I thought we gave her the.
Kind of do an introduction back down.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know about hosting, but.
Oh, I thought we got that the last time we talked about this. Okay, is that, is now the right time to talk about that some more, or are we still on the agenda?
Let's, let's finish the agenda, then we won't, then we'll talk about the, you know, the strategy more.
Okay, that sounds good.
So, everyone okay with Martha putting together an agenda with those, and then we'll work on the local bill separately?
We'll talk to Berenji, too.
Yeah, we just said, what exactly, yeah.
The privilege license.
Yes.
The design, design and aesthetics, the kind of redo of HB 150, and then the historic tax credit.
Okay, okay.
And, and, and a general, we, support of the League's.
Whatever we did.
So, it's very much 2014s, less the environmental.
Yeah. Frank, any thoughts or words as we close? We'll get something and vote on it in two weeks' time.
You know, my, my two cents is, I think it goes without saying, you support the League agenda. You know, it's like, I'm a lawyer, I support the bar association. You don't even have to say it. I think this needs to be, what does Morrisville want? Unique to Morrisville. And they expect you to support the League's agenda, you know. Now, the privilege license tax, you need to make the case of how that puts a dent in your budget, and you, you need to fill that hole, however they choose to fill it.
Yeah.
I get that, but I wouldn't, I would just focus on Morrisville, be my two cents.
I'm fine with that thought. Everyone okay now? So, we'll just have the three? Okay.
I'd probably like the whole, despite what Frank says.
I know.
I mean, that's your, that's your call.
That's fine, I'm pulling everyone.
I'd like to include him.
Are you pulling from Michael to me, or?
I'm just down here, Michael, do you have any thoughts about that?
No, other than.
We're not, we're not going to vote for it in two weeks, so it's either in or out in two weeks.
Can I just ask Liz something? Because she's a leader in the League. Would the League appreciate the towns supporting them in this way, or you, do you think that it matters? Because, I mean, we're doing it to support them, but if they don't care.
Oh, no, I'm sure they would appreciate it, and I think they would care.
Okay, then, I support it.
So, in two weeks, be prepared to vote three or four items, so, okay.
Are we looking into the extra fee for the multifamily? Are they looking at that, or no?
Have we directed?
Well, what we asked her to do, Martha, to do was to look at the process of introducing a local bill, just personally, I think that.
Feasibility.
Yeah.
Does it go on this list, I guess that's where?
No, no, it's a separate, it's a separate process.
Okay, and the same thing with adding a local bill, you can do that later, too, it's not part of this process?
I think, I, it doesn't have to be part of the legislative agenda to introduce a local bill, is what I'm sure the answer is.
Okay, right, okay. All right, so we'll revisit this in two weeks, to, on the subject of strategy and things like that. We have, we obviously have options, we, we could try to put together a Wake County delegation. I think they're, they're getting busy, though, and I think that's why Kerry did theirs earlier. Certainly a great thought, and perhaps in the future, we need to, you know, plan for those earlier. We, we all get invited to a lot of different things, and certainly, it makes an impact when we invite those local Wake County folks to come along, and let them know about it, and it would encourage people, I think we've done a pretty good job at that, I'd just say, keep doing that. If there's additional thoughts about that, we can, we can kind of take them offline if there's, you know, if we still want to try to do a Wake County get-together. How would?
I thought we mentioned a breakfast in another meeting, so that was one of the ideas that we.
Like on a Friday when they're not in session or something?
A breakfast, yeah.
Martha, maybe, maybe talk to Ben over, Ben Schirer over in Kerry, and, and get a, get an idea on how difficult that may or may not be.
I know they have seven members of 16, so.
I think that would be worthwhile, to showcase Morrisville.
Sure, I think it's worth, worth asking, but find out from their town manager how that was put together, and if it's still feasible with the calendar as it is, and so we'll, we'll look into that. But in the meantime, let's all, you know, just remember them as we go to different things, and if you want to extend an invite, probably makes a good impact, and I think we're all doing a good job with them, and I, I feel like we, we see them often enough and, and don't really ask for nearly as much as we really want to, so.
Well, we're looking to give them something this time. As it is to us.
Sure, I'd give them a visit, though. Martha, you okay with that? Okay, all right. Anything else before we move on? Okay. We have some announcements, you heard the earlier announcements, our official briefing session is on February 10th, two weeks after that is a business session on the 24th. Please see the website for the full listing. I will need a motion to go into closed session. Could I have our resident town?
Ah, so that would be a motion, a move that we go into closed session pursuant to General Statutes 143-318.11A6, to discuss a personnel matter.
Second, my motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we'll give the chamber a couple minutes to clear out, and then we'll have our closed session here in a couple minutes.
Yeah.
Three years old, maybe get a new.